Seven o'clock, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, next on the agenda is the School Committee Minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes and wave them? Okay, we're gonna turn the presentation over to Dr. Burke.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I love having everybody here at the School Committee meeting, so thank you for attending tonight, and I look forward to hearing your comments. I am going to ask Assistant Superintendent Priti Jahari to come forward, but before she does, and she can actually just stand there if she wants, I'd like to make a couple of comments. We held the community meeting on the budget last week. I forget what day, because everything's blurring right now. One of the things that came up was the fact that this was the first time that the community was receiving the budget. That is the process that does take place. The first time that the community receives the draft budget is certainly at the community meeting. I'd like you to, you know, if you get a chance, pull out your phone and look at your calendar. We do not receive the governor's numbers until the, and this is by Massachusetts Constitution, until the 4th Thursday of January. That's January 23rd. So, we need to balance our numbers against the governor's numbers. So, within two weeks, we are turning it around, because we have an obligation, and it's just a good practice obligation, to basically talk about the budget with the union. And so, within two weeks, we had a draft budget that was probably, at that time, about 75% done, and we presented it to the union leadership. It was right before February break. So then you, that was about 12 days, 12 school days, to turn a budget out. Then you get February break in there, and then we had another 10 or so, or 12 or so days, maybe it's 22 days. But basically, we're turning around a budget within four weeks. That is a timeline that other school districts do not have to do. Many school districts do not turn their budgets out, their first budget out, until after the House numbers come out. And you know the House numbers come out after the governor's numbers. So, I want to just make sure that you understand, as we turn this out, we're listening to the feedback. We are hearing what you're saying. We cannot always agree, because the bottom line is, we do have to balance a budget, and, sorry, and we are underfunded. If we're underfunded by, in special education, by $8 million, and you saw the graphs, you saw what the state gives us, but what the actual cost is. That money is diverted from regular education. That's the only way that we can do it. If our collective bargaining and health benefits are not funded by $15 million, that is diverted from regular education. That has been the complaint, that has been the calling cry, that over these years, the foundation budget has not kept up with inflation, and more and more money has been trickled away from regular education in particular, but also trickling away from innovation and educational entrepreneurship. And that's where we have to fight at the state level. And I will talk about the public hearing that will be coming up in March, later on in my comments. So, I've asked Mr. Jahari to come forward and to talk about our accomplishments with Early College and the CHS vision, because this is intricately woven with our initiative to go deep in the Spanish language for our students and to increase the number of students attaining the seal of bilinguism. Because that makes them marketable, they can walk out of Chelsea High with stackable credentials to be a medical translator and be able to have a high-paying job while they're paying for their college education, because we know that our students need to be employed. At the same time, we heard what you said about the French language. And so, the French will be back in the curriculum for this year. In the meantime, we have to now look at the budget as to where we make the cut in lieu of putting the language back. So, it's not, it's not that we can put it back and say that we're not gonna have to cut someplace else, but we heard the value that you stated, and so we will be putting those back in. At the same time, we want to continue to push the Spanish language. So, if we get more money, if we're successful with advocacy, we will still go forward with adding Spanish electives, so that we can move our students forward to, you know, the AP exams in the Spanish language, as well as the seal of bilinguism, because we do feel that that is an employment initiative for our students. So, with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Jahari to show us the vision.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna talk about the Early College Program, both how it exists today, as well as the vision going forward. As you know, our Early College Program has received a great deal of positive recognition from the Department of Education, as well as from the governor. He came here for a visit. Many of you were also here for the visit. So, I wanted to talk through kind of the nuts and bolts of the program, as well as how we are planning to develop it in the next two years. The work of the Early College Program is definitely a team effort, led by me, Kim Murphy, the Assistant Principal at Chelsea High School, Jackie Corbasi, who's the Early College Guidance Counselor, and Tanya Baez, who helps facilitate internships in the program. So, just, just to contextualize what I'm gonna talk about today, I wanted to remind you of our Chelsea document with our five-year strategic plan. One of our initiatives, one of the strategic initiatives, is for Chelsea Public Schools to have students graduate with dual degrees, not just a high school diploma, but also an associate's degree. Students, we want students to be able to enter careers with long-term trajectories by earning stackable credentials through continuing their education. We want this to be done in a financially prudent and productive way for them, so that they can truly achieve their, their big goals. The Early College Program has taken many different forms over the last five years, and I'm gonna talk through its evolution. So, Chelsea High School, last year, was one of five schools, or one of five districts, awarded the Early College Designation by the state in the first round of applications. A couple more districts have achieved it since then. With this Early College Designation, this year in the governor's budget comes additional funding for students who are in these designated programs. The programs must follow five guiding principles. They have to have equitable access, guided academic pathways, enhanced student support, connection to careers, and effective partnerships. My understanding is that there's about 1,000 students across these programs in the state that are participating in designated programs, and I think a great point of pride for us is over 20% of those students come from Chelsea. We have over 220 students in the Early College Programming based on the designation. So, what I also wanted to show you, so the, this, part of the program is that there are some pretty specific criteria. Early College means students who have the potential to earn 12 or more credits while they are with us at the high school. Dual enrollment students are students who are just taking one or more classes. So, everyone, all students are dual enrollment, only some students are early college. But again, we have 220 students this year, 220 juniors and seniors in the program. Our Early College and Dual Enrollment enrollment has been increasing steadily for the last four years, something that I want to point out in the second graph, that even as our student population or our overall enrollment has declined, the enrollment in the Early College Programming has actually increased. I think the Early College Programming is something that both attracts and retains students in our public school system. So, just to now give you some more nuts and bolts, like how, what does this actually look like at the high school? And we actually have one of our pathway teachers here tonight in the audience, as well as the 11th, 12th grade coach who oversees all three of these pathway programs. So, there are three interdisciplinary programs: Law and Public Policy, Education Pathway, Health and Life Science. So, students are taking interdisciplinary classes in these pathways. In addition to that, they are taking internships tied specifically to those pathway goals and themes. And then, third, they are taking Bunker Hill Community College classes that either meet prerequisites for associate's degrees or bachelor's degrees in these areas, or are actually classes in these content areas that preview for them what a career in this profession might be like. And what I've listed under those pathways are just some of the certificates or associate's degrees that they could be working towards. Here's just another look at it, tying to use like some of the specific internships that they have: Bright Horizons, YMCA, Mass General, our Police Department, Court Services. So, they, again, these are content-specific internships. And then, there's content-specific classes that students can take: Medical Terminology, Principles of Psychology, Becoming a Teacher. So, they're getting a real taste of what it would like, would be like to begin a career in one of these professions. So, now, talking about what's the, the big vision, how are we looking to expand and grow? Many of you on the School Committee have expressed a desire for us to do more college and career exploration earlier in the high school, high school career. And so, what we are proposing, in alignment with the direction Desi is moving, they've created a new My Cap curriculum for career advising, is a elective in the 9th grade, and this would be open to all 9th graders to explore early college and career, career exploration. This would include like a research paper exploring new careers. Then, what we wanted to do in the 10th grade was allow students to take just one Bunker Hill class, because there's still 10th graders taking college-level classes is a big leap. But there are classes aligned to the pathways that don't have prerequisites. So, we've specifically selected classes that would give you a taste of what it might be like to take, to join the Law and Public Policy Pathway, or the Health and Life Sciences Pathway. But this would be an opportunity for students to already begin earning credits in the college pathway, so this, up to three credits. This would just be an opt-in if you want to do it. It wouldn't preclude you from being able to enter the pathways in your 11th grade year. So, in your 11th grade year, you could join one of the three pathways. And even if you took a law class in 10th grade, and then you sort of said, "Oh, that's actually not what I want to do", you could join one of the other pathways. So, again, our, our goal is to give kids access and many points to, to join in, or to get off the path. So, in 11th grade, students would take their three interdisciplinary classes. We are currently working with Bunker Hill to align our 11th grade ELA curriculum with Bunker Hill, so that students could earn concurrent credit for that class. They would, in addition to that, take two Bunker Hill classes per semester, yeah, per semester. And then, 12th grade, we want to have students be able to take four or more classes, and actually transition from taking the classes at Chelsea High School to being, taking them at the Bunker Hill campus. And for some students who are ready to, they could, they could become full-time Bunker Hill students at this point. So, this is what would help them, this, with this new trajectory. Students would be able to earn 24 or more credits while still at Chelsea High School. And then, they can work towards some specific certificates. I just outlined one, one or two in each of the pathways. In, so in addition to that, what I said is, we are really working hard to align our own curriculum with Bunker Hills, so that we know when students leave us, they are prepared for these Bunker Hill classes and don't have to take the remedial coursework. So, we're taking some of Bunker Hill's exit exams and making them part of our exit exams, and going through an alignment and calibration process with Bunker Hill professors, so that they are saying like, "An A grade at Chelsea High School means that you can move on to this higher-level course at Bunker Hill." So, this work has already happened in statistics. It has also already happened in geometry, and it's in progress in our ELA class. This is also extraprofessional development and career advancement for our own CTU teachers, because if they are then dual-qualified to be able to teach in Bunker Hill classes, if they would like to in the summer, or in the evenings. So, again, just kind of giving you a dipstick into these different pathways, and what would you be allowed to do? So, you could work, you could get a certificate in law enforcement, which is 27 credits. There are many different ways to become a police officer. This would be one of the ways, putting you on the path to becoming a police officer or a dispatch officer. The other program is our Early Childhood Development Program. This is 18 credits, so you could more than meet the credit requirements for this. This would prepare you to become a teacher's aide or a paraprofessional. Medical assistant. This certificate qualifies graduates for employment in hospitals, clinics, health maintenance organizations, and physical physicians' offices. Again, the idea is really to create stackable credentials in the areas that students see long-term growth for themselves. So, you're in the industry, learning on the job, earning money while still going to school. The Medical Interpreting Certificate highlights some of the pieces Dr. Burke was speaking about earlier. Again, this is 18 credits. You could finish this while in Chelsea High School. And I just outlined the specific courses for this. One of the requirements for this program is bilingualism. So, this is where you see synergy happening between all the different programs in Chelsea High School, why we want to have a deep investment in Spanish language, why the seal of bilinguism is a really important thing. It helps qualify you for this program, and these are high-demand jobs, not just in our community, but really throughout our state. So, this certificate would qualify graduates for, again, for employment in hospitals, clinics, and chronic care facilities. So, just in wrapping up a little bit for you, each of our students who earns 12 or more credits, so each student who is in the Early College Program saves approximately $6,000. With over 200 students in the program, that means that we are saving our families in the Chelsea community over $1 million. And then, just a student shout-out or highlight is our graduate from 2018, Jamarra Morales, who earned her EMT certificate this January. So, she graduated six months ago and already has her EMT certificate. And if you've talked to her recently, she's got big dreams. This is just the first step in a long path for her, but she's already now earning money and working in the field that she wants to. She's already coming back and talking to current 11th and 12th graders about, "Here are the classes that you need to take. This math class helps you with this." But her excitement and enthusiasm is something that we want to help explode with our programming. I also have some asks of you as our School Committee. Just want to talk to you about the City of Chelsea Scholarship. So, last year, the City Council, in partnership with Bunker Hill Community College, put forward a very generous scholarship for our students. So, students who had earned 12 or more credits and were planning to continue their education at Bunker Hill were eligible for our scholarship. 20 of our graduates took advantage of this and have saved more than $90,000 to date through this scholarship. We have another 115 seniors who would be eligible for this scholarship. So, I will be working with Tom Ambrosino to put this forward, to share some of these highlights, and to put forward another request to City Council. So, please do your best in lobbying with our City Council to make this scholarship happen for a second year. So, that's one big highlight and thing that we're looking ahead to. And then, in addition to that, we're working on, we're always looking to expand and grow. And so, we're developing new partnerships. I just recently met with Bunker Hill, and again, people in the audience, Sam Baker was a part of this meeting, and Kim Murphy. Boston College has heard about the great work that we are doing and has been reaching out to us. And they have started their own bilingual education certificate. So, they have a specific class that prepares teachers to be bilingual teachers. So, there's great synergy, again, here with them, Boston College, being able to place teachers in that program, in our Camino's program, but then also to take kids from our education pathway into Boston College. And one of the ways that we could start that is by them actually teaching one of their classes here at Chelsea High School for students in the education pathway. In addition to that, since I had their audience, I rubbed in that BU gives a scholarship just to a Chelsea graduate, and I asked if they would match that. And they're, they actually are looking into it. So, he's like, "I can take that back to my dean", and, and they are working hard to have more students from community, like communities like ours going to their school. So, I think that, again, this creates that pathway for our students to experience what a BC class is like in our setting, where there's, where there's some comfort, and then for them to start taking classes there. So, that's what we're looking ahead to. So, now, I just wanted to give you a chance to ask some questions.
Before we open it up to questions, I just want to, you know, one of the things I want to make sure that we all understand is, this program began, first of all, in 2012, and it has grown every year since. At the same time, it's the right thing to do for our students, but there's also another piece to this. It also is competition. It does allow us to compete, and is a window of opportunity right now, where we are the leaders in this initiative in the state. 25% of the entire student population in the state that is enrolled in Early College comes from Chelsea. That window of opportunity, where we are out in front, and we are the, we are the leaders, is going to start to close, because in the governor's budget, he did allocate $1,000 to every student in an Early College Program within the budget. So, others are going to start competing. This competition for us, we need to leverage it, we need to market ourselves, and we need to pull back, at the high school level in particular, our students from the charters, from the private schools, because this is attractive to families. This is attractive to students, and this helps, long-term, to minimize the costs of higher education, which for many of us is, it, it's the greatest obstacle for our kids. So, this is aspirational. This is hopeful. And so, I will also say that Commissioner Jeff Riley, I mean, you know that we have had the governor here, Commissioner Riley, we've had the Secretary of Education, we've had Alice Peish, one of the Joint Education Committee Chairs. People are coming to look at it, and so we know the competition of others getting their program going is gonna be fast, right? Commissioner Riley has invited us, and unfortunately, Julio was invited, but he can't attend, but a group of us will be going to the Commissioner's Summit. The Commissioner is having a statewide summit on March 19th. And he has specifically asked Chelsea High School to sort of redo their presentation that they did for the governor. We had to tweak it a bit, because, and actually, I honestly, I will confess, I tried to get out of it, because it's, it's, he's holding it at UMass Amherst, and that's three hours up and three hours back. But in my phone conversation this week, it was, "No, this is what he wants for the future of Massachusetts education", and so he wants to showcase us, but that also means we're gonna be out there. There are already 450 people attending this conference. We are presenting three times. 40 minutes, 40 minutes, the same one, over to 40 minutes, three times. At the same time, they're gonna be copying us. So, the window of opportunity, we have to leverage this and, and push.
Can I open up for questions? Does anybody have any questions, Julio?
I just want to thank Mr. Jahari and his team for the work that they've been putting in for the Early College Program.
But I do have two questions. My first one is, are you guys planning on putting a limit of the amount of students that are gonna be enrolling in the dual enrollment program in the next years? Or are you just gonna, is there gonna be like a cap?
We have not talked about a cap. There's obviously space limitations and things like that that, that do happen, and funding limitations that happen. But, so right now, there's about, somewhere between 15 and 18 courses offered each semester, and one of the pieces with growth is about having students, more students take classes at the Bunker Hill campus, but we haven't talked about a specific cap yet.
And are you guys planning on offering more internships? I know I saw the, the list of internships. No, I didn't take an internship when I was at the high school, but I do recall there was a bit more. But do you guys plan on expanding that in the next years, or?
Yep. So, we have, I think, this year, we have around 80, 88, I think, different internships that are happening. We have, and Tanya Baez is our internship coordinator and is actively working with community partners, not just in Chelsea, but also in the Boston area. So, those are always expanding, yes.
Thank you.
Jacina?
Thank you, Mr. Jahari and your team as well. Just wanted to say that the exposure of the program, the classes, is really like amazing, because then the student, as parent, they don't make us pay for those classes that unnecessarily. And it gives them, you know, like you say, the taste, whether they want to be, you know, doctor or medical interpreter, or vice versa. But also, I like the fact that we are also getting the students prepared for that exam that once you go to the college, they have to do it, the math and the, and the English one, that are a plus that we have that available at the high school. So, our schools, I would say they are sexier now with these programs.
Definitely.
Yes. And I do have a question also on the, I know that Tanya is really engaged with us in trying to get some of the students into, into the field, and I do appreciate that she's doing, you know, like trying to match the students specifically to the interest that they're not just putting students. I just want to be a test of that, that she's looking like to see a fit of the student with the nonprofit or the other organization that they are with.
Is there any other questions? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a public comment. I'm gonna ask, please keep your, under four minutes. We're gonna, Dr. Burke is gonna be the timekeeper, so she'll nudge me if you go over four minutes. Does anybody like to get up there and speak? Also too, you have to state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Sarah Coretto, and I reside at 834 Broadway, here in Chelsea. First, I would like to thank the School Committee for being here and allowing us to speak. And I wanted to talk today about the budgets that were happening. I first heard about them when I attended the meeting, I think it was February 27th, at the Williams. And I learned a lot about the budget, but overall, I was really frustrated with the fact that none of the students had an input regarding to the budgets and how much money would be spent and how it would be spent. I am a firm believer in communication, and I believe that there should always be communication and negotiations when it comes to decision-making. So, why is it that there is very little communication between the students, teachers, and city officials when it comes to school budgets? As students, we should have the opportunity to give our input about what we need and don't need in our schools, because if someone else makes those decisions for us, how are we benefiting? Last year, the History Department at Chelsea High School gave out surveys to students, and within those surveys, we determined that we wanted to take AP World and Latin American Studies. And I, along with a bunch of my peers, took that opportunity, and I'm currently taking AP World History. And I think this is an example of a great success within the school system. And I hope that in the future, the School Committee and city officials can come together and maybe have a specific group where students give their input, so we can avoid having constant conflict between the students, the school board, and the teachers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Baker, 3 Ganji Terrace in Woburn. I'm the 11th, 12th instructional coach at Chelsea High School, and also the Vice President of the Teachers Union. I just wanted to mention before I read my prepared I just wanted to mention before I read my prepared short statement, the early college program is extremely important, and it's extremely exciting, and I'm not just saying that because I co-lead the pathway program. It's amazing to see what our kids can do when they're given the opportunity to engage in college when they're in high school, and it's just awesome. So I wanted to say that, and thank you, Mr. Hary, for presenting on that. So I've been an educator in Chelsea for 12 years, at both the Brown School and currently at Chelsea High School. I have two specific requests for school committee members, everyone here in the audience, and the greater community of Chelsea educators, parents, administrators, and staff. My first request relates to the state budget. Our recurring budget problems stem from the long-term broken budget foundation formula. The formula has not been updated since 1993. Please take the time to contact your representatives and push them to advocate for and to vote for the Education Promise Act. This piece of legislation will go a long way to fix the incorrect and inequitable funding formula at the state level. Currently, our per pupil funding is woefully inadequate and is resulting in many of the cuts we're seeing this year and in previous years. Passage of this bill is the most important element in fixing the funding crisis for the long term. My second request is for the short term. I'm asking everyone to advocate locally at the city level. I'm asking every resident of Chelsea and every person who cares about the students of Chelsea to lobby the city council to continue to provide adequate local funding for the Chelsea Public Schools. According to tax information provided by the yearly budgets posted on the City of Chelsea website, city revenues have increased by around 24% since 2014. This is a financial benefit that we cannot squander. In that time period, education funding has increased by 18%. This is laudable, however, we can do more. If the City of Chelsea could provide just 3% more funding for this year's budget, we would be able to keep the French department, that's been addressed, fully staff our middle school ELL department, and restore co-teaching positions at the middle school level. I greatly appreciate the commitments that have already been made by the city council and city manager, and Jacina. However, considering the money coming into the city from the outside, we need just a little bit more for the people who are inside. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brianna Maldonado, and I live at 37 Murray Street. My concerns were more about how, all of these presentations being made about how we want to make our schools more attractive, including the, expanding the early college program, and also expanding upon the Caminos program all the way up to the high school. However, I want to know why we don't care about the fact that our class sizes are not improving, and why teachers have to do double the work and have to compensate for the fact that there are cuts in every single department of the core classes. As a student who came from a chemistry class, where there were 20 students and had to be moved into a chemistry class of 32, it was really hectic and very difficult to get the individual attention that I really needed. And I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for the other 31 students who are also in the same chem class. Furthermore, Stephanie Simon, who is away on a track meet in New York, couldn't be here, but she would like for me to express on her behalf that it's really hard to support a plan that expands areas and other categories that none of the parents nor the children ask for, and it's very hard to support any of these programs when our input is not included and we're not asked directly whether or not we would like to receive this type of assistance or help. As Sarah said, it is important that we keep transparency between our representatives and the people of the community who are being affected directly by the changes of this budget. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniela Alkzar, and I live at 45 Everett Avenue. I have heard what you have said about the French department and keeping it, and I thank you and appreciate that action very, very much. French for the past four years has greatly impacted me in ways I cannot explain in the short amount of time. I will continue to share my experience within the French department. I remember my first day of my freshman year, I took French, which at the time was one of the three languages offered at the high school. I was very excited to go home and tell my parents one of the phrases I had already learned that day, "Je m'appelle Daniela." They looked at me in awe, I could tell by the reaction in their faces that they were happy for me. They were happy because I wasn't limiting myself to just two languages. Throughout the year, I continued to learn more and more phrases, but only some truly stuck. It took me a few years, three to be exact, to learn that the sentences I was learning weren't important. It was the basic skills I was picking up that were. I'm going to jump to the week before my junior year, that my junior year came around. I had just received my schedule, I noticed that there was no French three teacher. But I didn't worry too much about it, as I thought that we would, that they would hire one within the first week that we were in school. However, we went a month without a French teacher. Every single student in a French class went 30 days without learning any French. By the time Mr. Rockino was hired, we only had about three months to catch up from everything we missed and all the other material that was supposed to be covered. I and a few, and a few other of my classmates were very excited to begin to learn. I would like to talk a little more about Rockino. He is a kind and such a wonderful teacher. He is always cracking jokes and has made learning French fun, not to mention, he is a native French speaker. Originally, French Four wasn't able to fit into my schedule. I was devastated, because I really enjoyed having him as my teacher, I wanted to continue to expand my skills in French. I emailed my guidance counselor a week before school started, and was desperate to find a way to include French into my schedule. The only thing I was able to do to myself at that point was just take the material from Rockino and self-teach myself, but it would not feel the same or be the same. A week into my second semester of my senior year, I talked to my guidance counselor and was fortunate enough to put French Four into my third period. Now I want to be able to provide the same experience or opportunity for other students. Again, I would like to thank you for keeping the French department. You are not, you are not only keeping these teachers, but the mentors of some and the friends of others. I hope that this is not a one-year commitment, but something that is prioritized just as much as Spanish and everything else that has been done with, that is going to be done with the Spanish department. Thank you.
Marcella Castillo, 110 Chestnut Street. I want to start off by thanking the people that do their best every day to keep Chelsea High running and strong, the custodians, lunch ladies, our security, the teachers, and our principal. Have y'all ever seen the movie The Freedom Riders? If you haven't, it's about a teacher working in a low-income high school, and she creates a bond with her students. I can relate that a lot to Chelsea High especially. What stood out the most was the bond between the teacher and her students. I'm sure that many students can feel the same way about their teachers at Chelsea High, and also the teachers that are potentially leaving. Cutting out these teachers means cutting out recommendation letters that are essential, especially when going into college. I'm going to be honest and say that I've never lost a teacher or have ever faced, about to lose a teacher, but I can't help to think about where I would have been if I had lost the teachers that pushed me through when I was at the lowest in my high school. The education pathway for students wanting to become teachers, are we teaching them to stay away from low-income communities where we need them the most? In an already majority Spanish-speaking school, why add more? That doesn't allow other students to grow and stand out. We have a mentee from Bridge Academy, Christian Ruiz, who cannot be here today because he is working. He is one of the Bridge Academy students that are not willing to take Spanish. His Spanish is already perfect, like many other students at Chelsea High. And rather than take it easy, he wants to take French. It's hard enough for a student to even get the language that they want as a freshman. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Post, 91 Memorial Park Ave. I'm here on behalf of the students that couldn't come, the students that will be affected by the budget cuts, the students that will lose their biggest supporters. Budget cuts in the past have affected the path that students set for themselves on their way to graduation from Chelsea High School. How do we expect our students to succeed when our biggest supporters are having to leave year after year? Of course, we are grateful to have our French teachers stay in Chelsea High, but what will building the Spanish program truly do for the students that want to learn how to file their taxes, or apply to jobs, or learn how to save money? So instead of pushing the money that is supposed to support the students towards a subject they know much about, why not put the money towards what will truly help in life? One of the most useful classes I took was freshman year, personal finance. And as a freshman, I was learning what I would have to learn after high school, but the following year, it was removed. So now, all the students, they lost an opportunity that they have to learn when they're out and don't have the support. Your role is to listen and help the students so that we can succeed. And don't you think that we, the students, know what's best for ourselves? So what would be best is to listen. So on behalf of the students and teachers that couldn't be here, we wish for you all to take a look at the budget and figure out a different route, just like some students may have to figure out a different route if more departments and teachers in our school are cut.
Hi, I'm Ruben Padilla from Tenland Street. I'm here to talk about how these budget cuts, how getting rid of, how these budget cuts are getting rid of the opportunities that the students at Chelsea High are being given, but only can take few classes for. And I know it's supposed to be your job to give us the opportunities that we want and need, but with all the budget cuts that are happening, the opportunities that we were promised are being taken away from us, and with that, opportunities for later on in the future are being taken away as to, or taken away from as well. And with the teachers who are leaving, some of these teachers are some of the lifelines of students, because in Chelsea High, some of the teachers are only people that, are the only people that some students are able to talk to, and they're go-to for their problems. But with them leaving, now they're going to have no one, and it's going to be much harder on them. So if we can put, if we can, if we can, yes, that is my speech.
Hi, Ariana Gilbert, 10 Mulberry Street, Apartment 3, Beverly. I'd like to thank you for deciding to keep the French program on. I came, I teach French 1 and 2 at Chelsea High School. I came to advocate for my students to be able to continue in French. As was stated last week, 95 students took French 1 this year, and those students would have had to either start over in Spanish 1, which would have interfered with their schedules and them taking all these great college classes later on, their junior and senior year, or they would have been put in a lab to do Odysseyware and complete French 2 on a computer. So on behalf of those 95 students, as well as the 63 in French 2, many of whom would like to go on, as well as the 40 in French 3, many of whom would like to go on, thank you for making the right decision.
My name is Oscar Maya, and 79 Maverick Street. And as has been said, I am very thankful that you're deciding to fund it for, fund French for this year, but I do want to make reference to how we should be focusing more on Chelsea's diversity, because we pride ourselves over the fact that we welcome and invite all types of people, and I feel like all those types of people should have a unique opportunity in both Spanish and French. And I also want to say that there should be an alternative to taking money from education, because it's just not right, so.
Hi, my name is Catherine Anderson. I'm a 7th and 8th grade special education teacher at the Brown, and I live at 28 Warren Ave in Somerville. I just want to talk about a couple of things quickly. First of all, I'm thrilled that we're keeping the French department in the, I've been teaching in Chelsea Public Schools for, this is my sixth year now, and this is the first in the past three years I've been paying close attention to the budget, that a significant change has been made based on community feedback. That being the first change, significant change in the budget that's been made is also concerning. I would love to see more concrete steps for communities and schools to have input into the budget ahead of time. There's evidence that the current foundation budget underfunds Chelsea Public Schools by $20.7 million per year. If and when we get that money through our advocacy at the State House, we need to make sure that those students and their families are the ones who are deciding how that additional money is spent. The other thing I want to talk about is the ESL program at the middle school department. In the past three years, every single year, the ESL department has seen massive shifts in its setup and the way that they are providing services to students. A lot of these changes have been made based on state accountability and have been made to improve the educational outcomes for our students. Next year, though, we're losing another four teachers at the ESL middle school level. This is going to be another massive upheaval in the way that we are teaching our newest students and the students that need the most support in accessing curriculum. Just as we found a way to make the French department stay, it's critical to our most vulnerable students at what I believe is one of the most vulnerable ages, that we keep the ESL department consistent from year to year, so that our teachers and their curriculum can provide students the education that they deserve. Thank you.
Hi, Christina Tobar, 190 Bridge Street in Salem. I've been at Chelsea High School for 12 school years now, and I have been in charge of the new teacher program for the past three years, and working with the new teacher program for the past six. I'd like to highlight a logistical problem that is coming up, I think unintendedly, with the budget. Having just held our new teacher meeting this past Tuesday, there's a few numbers that you should keep in mind. We have 38 new teachers this year out of a staff of 130-ish of teaching staff at Chelsea High School. Last year, we had 28 new teachers, the year before that, 26, and the year before that, 52. We have had more new people cycle through the building than we have teaching positions and support staff positions in the past four years. And this year, props to Mr. Hary and the admin team last year, we have a great set of new hires this year, the strongest group we've seen in four years that want to be here and don't want to leave and are here for the right reasons and are willing to buy into all of the initiatives that we've pushed and put forward and asked people to run with. But out of those 38 new teachers, a bunch are already looking for jobs, because they don't know which 10 positions are going to be cut. And so we stand to hemorrhage more teachers than actually the budget is going to cut, and our kids are going to be faced with more new teachers who are learning everything. We really prepare our teachers to be hired by other districts. We prepare them extremely well. So I'd like for you to keep that in mind as well, when we think about just, it's not 10 positions at the high school. We stand to lose a bunch more, because the positions won't be decided and official probably until June, when we have retirements, people who don't get asked back, people who have found other jobs. So we have a huge window of opportunity for our teachers to leave us, because they need to have secure employment for next year.
Hello, my name is Norealise De Jesus. I live at 31 Lewis Street. I want to start by saying thank you. The presentation on the dual enrollment and the college programs is amazing. Thank you to all the city councilors, the superintendent, and the teachers on the ground that support our students in earning these credits before they get to college. I want to talk a little bit about communication. I think that I, the community that we have, we need to make sure that we are being accessible to the needs, and some of the current issues that we're facing as a community is specifically with employment and gentrification really being a burden on our families. We need to make sure that our families are notified and given the space that's flexible with these, with their, with their jobs, the multiple jobs that they're working, with the multiple concerns that they have with housing and gentrification. And so I ask that you guys please consider these, these obstacles that our families are facing when you're trying to improve some of the communication and the outreach, and how we are better notifying our parents, because it's true what Ms. Burke says, you know, if our families knew how amazing these college programs were, are in the Chelsea High School, this would really support them in keeping their children in the schools. I also wanted to talk about the fact that last year, the Chelsea Collaborative, its members and youth leaders worked with some of the city councilors, the superintendent, and school committee members to address the needs on funding on a state level and a local level. I second that we need to go back to the city council this year and not accept the fact that last year, they told us that, that they would fund, increase funding, but that we can't continue to ask for more funding, that this is really a state level. Well, yes, it is a state-level issue, but we can't just accept that, we can't come back to you for more money. They need to have our backs, they need to have our children's backs, and if we have a gap, and it's not being addressed by the state, they need to hold our back until the state addresses this problem. I am divided in this issue between the Caminos program. I was part of the pilot program. I was part of the pilot program when it first started with Mr. Gomez. It's an amazing program. I did it at the Kelly School. My daughter, who's here today, has been on the waitlist. She's in second grade, she's been on the waitlist since she was in kindergarten at the ELC. So I, you know, I understand also that she has sometimes class sizes where I get Valentine cards and she's in a classroom of thirty-two students. And I think to myself, how is it possible that my daughter's getting the right amount of attention with so many students in her class? But I also want her to have accessibility to Spanish classes and courses like the Caminos program. But I think that if we can accommodate everything, we need to, we need to express these concerns to the city council. Right? We need to tell the city councilor, "Listen, we have all these concerns and you need to help us. We, we, they're not doing enough for us." I want to end by saying that I'm excited to hear that there are a lot of teachers, or upcoming teachers, in the pathway program. I would like to know how many of those teachers are encouraged and supported to come back and support some of our local teachers. My daughter has the privilege of having two of my high school friends in her school and it's amazing for them to see her say hi and know that their mom was a friend of theirs in the high school. And so I think it would be amazing if we can continue the same way that we have police officers in our academy and in the, in our local police station that went through our SYEI program, live in Chelsea and know the community, that's the same way our teachers should be. And I think, you know, the teachers we have right now, it's amazing. I work with some of them. Catherine is very involved in our organizing at the Collaborative. But we should also be supporting our students who are on that pathway to becoming teachers. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Trish Sonia, I live at eight-fifty-five Broadway. I'm a member of the Chelsea Collaborative and I'd like to advocate for homeless families and how the budget impacts them. The homeless rate is growing and it shows. Obviously, it's due to the gentrification going on in our community. I would like the schools to address the needs of these students. Schools should provide services that would further support these students so that they have access to education just like the rest of us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brittany Fitzgibbon. I live at twenty-six Ryan Street in Malden, Massachusetts. I teach high school, I teach history at Chelsea High School. I have actually had a lot of the students who are in the room tonight. Very proud of them. I'm thrilled to hear about the amazing college programs, dual enrollment programs at the high school and so happy to hear that the French program will be staying. I am very concerned about the health class being cut. As a educated woman, I can still say pretty honestly that most of what I know about human health, sexuality, drugs and alcohol and those risks comes from my high school health class. We are currently a very vulnerable community to things like teen pregnancy and poor nutrition. So I think health class is very important for us. But also, right now, in the state and in the country, we are facing a heroin epidemic and a drug epidemic. We need health more than ever and our students deserve to have clear understandings about the dangers and risks that are being posed to them every day. I wanna echo to what Christina Tobar said as the mentor lead. We will lose many, many, many amazing teachers, I'm sure not just at the high school, but at all of our schools, if we are constantly cutting teachers. I know that these decisions are difficult and unfair and that the system for allocating money to our students is racist and classist. But we have to strive to find a better way. Because my first year at Chelsea High School, this is my fourth year, I had a student ask me in December if I was returning to the school. December. I was shocked. I told him, "Of course I'd be here." And he told me that most teachers leave. The emotional devastation for our students who constantly see turnover in their favorite teachers, I can't even imagine the toll that must take, not only on their education, but on their feelings of safety. I think it's really important that we recognize that even if we know that these costs are unfair and unjust and we express to our students, "This is about money and nothing else," it still means our students are watching their favorite teachers leave every single year. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, public speaker is closed. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Bork for the superintendent of schools reports.
Thank you, I just wanna kick. Sorry, wanted to cancel it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to ask Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent to come forward for the report, the student achievement report and the indicators of success. I believe you have a copy in front of you.
Good evening. I hope you all have a copy of our indicators. Tonight, we're gonna be talking about the monthly indicators that we always talk about. But we also have a few others. We have our winter-spring indicator, as well as one of our annual indicators and our usual mobility rates. If we could start on page three, we can look at attendance. In grades two through seven, we're meeting our goal of ninety-five percent attendance. We're close in pre-K, K, grade one and grade eight. And we're still working on improving attendance in grades nine through twelve. Overall, as a district, we are at ninety-three-point-three percent. Still hoping to achieve our goal better once flu season is over. If you could move to page four. This is one of our indicators that we don't have very often, which is the kindergarten fluence, nonsense word fluency. Just to give you a little background on what this test is, kindergartners are given words that make no sense, like, I don't know. It's hard to come up with words that don't make sense on the spot. But words that make no sense and asked to use their knowledge of letter sounds to sound them out. So there's no, that's why it's called nonsense. People always ask me, "Why do you give them a test that's nonsense?" It's the words that are nonsense. And it just tests how well they know their letter sounds and how well they can sound out words. So currently, in the winter, thirty-five percent of our students were found proficient or in the, in progress range on this test. I will say that this appears to be a decrease and it is a decrease over time. However, there were twenty percent of students right on the cusp of being proficient. So I am confident that by spring, we will, you know, we will meet where we were last year or even exceed it. If you could turn to page six. On page six, we have, the DESI has published the four-year graduation rate for last year and the five-year graduation rate for two thousand sixteen-seventeen. You will see that in the four-year graduation rate, we had a slight increase from fifty-seven-point-three percent last year to fifty-nine percent. And the five-year graduation rate was sixty-three percent. I will say this is for Chelsea Public Schools, not just Chelsea High School. This includes our outplaced students. In indicator eight of dropout, we are doing quite well compared to last year. The numbers that you see below each year are where we were at this time in the year, each year. So last year at this time, we were at five-point-two percent dropout. This year, we are at four-point-three-three. So we are point-eight-seven ahead of where we were last year. That said, this month, we had eleven students drop out. The details are on page seven, but as you can see at the table on the bottom of page six, most of our dropouts are still English language learners. We're still working hard to keep them in school. If you turn to page seven, you will see that of those eleven, one student went to an adult ed program. Ten are plans unknown, meaning that they dropped out and we don't know what, where they went or what their plans were. And you'll see that over the different grade levels, you know, grade nine, ten and eleven had the most kids with a few in grade nine. If you could turn to page nine for our last indicator tonight, you'll see that this month, in the month of February, which is a short month, you have to remember, but we had a hundred-and-fifteen kids either come or go. But it was pretty equal. We ended up ahead by one. We had fifty-eight in and fifty-seven out. And overall, for the year, we have had seventeen-point-three percent mobility, which is high. So you think about seventeen percent of our kids have come or gone, which is a thousand, over a thousand children. Overall, the ELC has gained students, a few students. The elementary has gained students. The middle school has stayed pretty equal, but the high school has declined, as we've been talking about. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Well, I guess not. Thank you, Sarah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Chairman, I would like to commend to the report the personnel update, which is enclosure B. There are seven new hires, four retirements, resignations, terminations, one promotion transfer. I would also like to commend to the report the monthly enrollment report, student enrollment report. We have a total of six thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-one students. Of that, six thousand eighty-seven are in the district. And then from our special education, we have one-hundred-and-eighty-four. For announcements, I'd like to give you a picture of the next couple of weeks. March is an extremely busy month. On Tuesday, we changed it to Tuesday, March twelfth, I will be doing a budget presentation at the Chelsea Collaborative. So we do a lot of budget presentations to gain feedback from all stakeholders. Six PM, Norielis. And so certainly anybody else is welcome to attend from the community. On March thirteenth, middle school budget presentation in coffee hour at the Williams duplex, eight forty-five AM. The elementary school budget presentation will be at the Mary C. Burke Complex Library at nine AM. Thursday, March fourteenth, school site council meeting and budget presentation at Chelsea High School at five fifteen PM. Tuesday, March nineteenth, the all-district concert for the Williams, it will be held at the Williams Middle School at six PM. March twentieth, there is a subcommittee of the whole at five-thirty here. The Thursday, three-twenty-one, is the all-district art show at the Williams School at six, beginning at six PM. And then that will run through Saturday noon time usually is when they, they end. Friday, March twenty-second, I have been invited, as well as school committee man Julio Hernandez, to present at the education public hearing, the education committee public hearing at the State House Gardner Auditorium. It will be Friday, March twenty-second. I know the Collaborative has been invited to present as well and I think AFT has been invited. There will, it will be an all-day affair, but this is the place where certainly we will be expressing, I will be there with the Mass Association of School Superintendents as well as school committee man Hernandez. But basically, this is where we want to get our message across because there is only so much money and, and I hear the pain. This is my fourth year, I don't enjoy having to propose cuts. So please understand that. And I don't enjoy having to cut teachers in particular. But unfortunately, unless we get some relief, this is the budget and this is the problem of relying so much on the state. So help me with that. In order to help me, you have over on the table, they've just redone the committee chairs at the House and Senate. So I have provided you, and I'll email it out to CPS All as well, but I have provided you, yours is two-sided over there, but the new joint committee on education, who are the new members, those are the ones we will now want to advocate and be writing to. The, as well as the joint committee on House Ways and Means. House Ways and Means is currently, they just started today, they started to take a look at numbers and ask questions. I met yesterday with Senate Chair Jason Lewis, who is now on the Joint Committee of Education. He took Sonia Chang Diaz's position. And so I met with him yesterday. He, I do feel he's an ally. He listened, he asked a lot of questions, he wants to understand. So this is our opportunity. These are the people we want to be emailing this weekend, before the twenty-second certainly. And also, the full list of the joint, both the Senate and the House Ways and Means. It's most important to email the House Ways and Means right now. The Senate will be next month. So please, feel free to take a hard copy and then tomorrow I will make sure that school committee, I email it to you as well as, I will email it to CPS All. And, Mr. Chairman, I believe that concludes my remarks.
I just wanna support Dr. Bork. None of us on the school committee wanna see any job eliminated or anything cut out from the students. It's a very difficult job Dr. Bork has. She doesn't wanna do it either, believe me. None of us do. But unfortunately, when you don't have the money, something has to go. And like I said last week in the, in the budget hearing, you know, if you have the Spanish department and you eliminate the Spanish department, the French department's happy. If you eliminate the French department, you know, the Spanish department's happy. So you can't please everybody. Dr. Bork and her administration does the best job they can. And we still have until the twenty-eighth to decide what actually goes and I will be voting on it the twenty-eighth. So I hope everybody understands here, something has to go. And unfortunately, if it's something that you like, there's, you know, it's, all I can say is I'm sorry, you know? But other than that, I'm gonna move on to the next committee report.
So I'd like to make motions, Chairman, to waive the president and finance report except for the student representatives. Give them a chance to...
Do I, somebody needs to second the motion?
Can I get a second?
Rosemary, okay, motion is waived. We're gonna move on to the committee reports of the student representatives.
Spring sports start on March eighteenth. Like Dr. Bork already said, we have our all-district school concert on the nineteenth of this month at the Williams at six. The Drama Club will have their yearly spring musical, Once on This Island, April fourth, fifth and sixth. And that's all that I have.
So as student representative, I really feel that it's my duty to express what is going on at Chelsea High School. I wanna express the environment in which students are in right now. I have not kept quiet about ten teachers being cut down from Chelsea High School. I have told this to my classmates and I cannot really express to you the expression they make when I tell them that we do not know which teachers are gonna be cut down yet. And that really shows that they have connections with some teachers and they fear to lose all those teachers. As a student in Chelsea High School and as I've seen in my classmates' faces as well, I can definitely tell you that teachers are the last line of defense that students have with their emotional circumstances. I know when I have something going on at home and I cannot really speak it to my friends because I don't think they would understand, I go to my teachers. Because they're the ones that can give me advice. They're the ones that I cannot go, if I cannot go to my parents, they're the ones I go to. And that is the same case for all of my classmates in Chelsea High School and even in the middle school as well. They are beginning to understand what it's like to be in financial conflict with the city and the school board. So I really want to emphasize my request today for the school board to really look into other alternatives. I do understand that it's a huge gap of money that we gotta account for. And I will tell you that we, as students, will advocate for budget at the state level. But until that change, if that change does not happen, until that time, I really ask you to really consider other alternatives that we can adjust for that change of budget. Because I can tell you that teachers do impact lives and they can change the entire course of one student's lifetime, their path, their job and the future and the impact that they will have on society as well. Teachers really are important. They're just not teaching kids subject like math, science. They are teaching them life advices. They are teaching them how to live and how to adjust to society when they grow up. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmanuel. Next is unfinished business. There is no, there is none unfinished business. So move on to the new business. Consideration and action to approve the members of the superintendent search committee as follows. Richard Maransky, Jeanette Fellerz and Julio Hernandez will be representing the Chelsea School Committee. Pretty Johara and Monica Lomborgo will represent the central office. Tom Imecino, Chelsea City Manager. Ymir Rodriguez, Chelsea City Council. Peter Paffa, this is how it's pronounced, but I'll try to do my best.
Papa Basilio.
Papa, whatever they, Papa Basilio. Chelsea's Teachers Union, designated. Mads... Hold on. Margot Di Biasso, Chelsea Administrators Union, designated. Annabelle Santiago, President of the AFSCME Union President. Lisa Line Weaver, Principal's designated. Louise Cap... Louise Capinella, elementary school teacher. Catherine Anderson, middle school teacher. Ilana Asher, high school teacher. Angelica Bashaw, parent. Marisol Santiago, parent. Those will make up the screening committee for the interview, the new superintendent job. Next, we have consideration and action to accept, no, I'm sorry, do I have to do a roll call for that?
I think you should.
Yeah, roll call. I'm sorry.
On the motion to approve the members of the Superintendent Search Committee, Ms. Alfaro?
I abstain, I have a question on that. I don't know if we have a chance to ask...
I make a motion to go out of order for Ms. Alfaro to answer a question.
I just would like to...
Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you need someone?
Second. Thank you. So on this one, I'd just like to ask, would it be possibility to amend and add a community member? Because we have the parents, but there is like, I noticed that there is no community organizations or...
It's too late for that.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Because this went out about a month ago, so this has been in circulation for about a month.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Motion to go back to order.
Second.
Can we take a roll call now?
Yes. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's six in the affirmative and three absent the motion carries.
Okay, next, consideration and action to accept $1,000 from the Neighborhood Developers for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. Explanation, the Neighborhood Developers is providing $1,000 to the Chelsea Opportunity Academy in support of Chelsea, support of school community buildings. The funds will be used for field trips, including admission fees and transportation and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $1,000 from the Neighborhood Developers for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Present. And the reason is because I work for TND, Neighborhood Developers. It's a complete interest.
Mr. DePato? That's five in the affirmative, one present, and three absent the motion carries.
Next, consideration and action to accept $12,000 from the T-Mobile to assist English language learners who are homeless, increase digital access. Explanation, Chelsea Public Schools has been awarded a grant from T-Mobile through the Empowered Program to expand digital access for homeless students. The continuity and devices provided through this grant will be used to provide Chelsea High School English language learners who are homeless with a phone book within an active hotspot. They will be allowed to take the equipment with them after the end of the school day so they can do homework, research, and et cetera. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $12,000 from T-Mobile to assist English language learners who are homeless, increase digital access, Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's six in the affirmative and three absent the motion carries.
Next, consideration and action to accept $2,000 from Dell Corporation for the Law and Public Policy Pathway at Chelsea High School. Explanation, the Dell Diversity Community of Dell Legal has issued a grant award of $2,000 to support the Law and Public Policy Pathway at Chelsea High School. The grant funds will be used for transportation costs for field trips, supplies, food, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $2,000 from Dell Corporation for the Law and Public Policy Pathway at Chelsea High School, Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's six in the affirmative and three absent the motion carries.
Next, consideration and action to accept 979 from the Chelsea Cultural Council for a program for at-risk middle school students. Explanation, Chelsea Public Schools has been awarded a grant from the Chelsea Cultural Council to support a ZOOMIC mini-series. ZOOMICs, a youth community center for the arts, will be engaged eight through 10 high-risk students in middle school in creative arts and community building. The grant funds will be used for contractual services, supplies, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $979 from the Chelsea Cultural Council for a program for at-risk middle school students, Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's six in the affirmative and three absent the motion carries.
Next, consideration and action to accept a donation of music supplies and instruments from the Woodwind Brasswind Instrument Store for the Wright Science and Technology Academy General Music Classroom. Explanation, explanation, Woodwind Brasswind, a band and orchestra instrument store has generously offered to donate xylophone mallets, headphones for pianos, boomwhacker instruments, ukuleles, and a wireless microphone clip for the Chelsea Public Schools District for the Wright Academy General Music Classroom. The equipment has an approximate retail value of $500 and will be delivered to the school at no cost to the district upon approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. The accepted items will be used for the Wright Science and Technology Academy for the General Music Classroom. Roll call.
On the motion to accept a donation of music supplies and instruments from the Woodwind Brasswind Instrument Store for the Wright Science and Technology Academy General Music Classroom, Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's six in the affirmative and three absent the motion carries.
Okay. Next, consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of $390,933 to move funds from the following accounts. Berkewood salaries, $85,000. Chelsea High School salaries, $52,000. ELC salaries, $50,000. Instructional and assessment curriculum design and teacher training expenses, $71,000. Other instructional programs, instructional salaries, $132,933, for a total of $390,933. And move funds to the following various accounts. Central office contracted services, $20,000. Central office office equipment, $800. Central office salaries, $51,000. Facilities management and transportation expenditure maintenance, $40,000. Facilities maintenance and transportation overtime, $34,333. George F. Kelly School expenses, $20,000. Other instructional programs after school, summer program expenses, $36,800. Special education administration and pupil personnel services, student support expenses, $188,000, for a total of $390,933. Explanation, the funds available are predominantly from salary accounts where staff were hired at a lower rate than was budgeted for one year ago. In addition, funds are being transferred from the account where anticipated succession planning costs had been budgeted. Funding is being transferred for the cost of the superintendent recruitment and succession planning salaries. And facilities funds are being added to extraordinary maintenance and overtime for costs anticipated early this spring. Funding for the Kelly School is being added for one-time costs associated with next year's expansion of the Caminos program to sixth grade, and a one-time expense related to a summer program that was inadvertently missed in the budget. Funding is being added to special education account for a portion of the cost resulting from the need to hire outside services for student evaluation this year. We have a roll call?
On the motion to approve a budget transfer in the amount of $390,933, Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
That's six in the affirmative and three absent the motion carries.
Next, we have communication. We have a letter from Reverend, I should say, we have a letter, Reverend Dr. Martha Lou King's Jr. Salvation Breakfast, thank you, from Reverend Dr. Sandra J. Whitley. Can I have a motion to accept this?
Motion to accept.
Second it.
Okay, motion is accepted. Next, we have, we have anybody here that have any announcements? Ms. Carlisle?
Two things. For many years, when we call the, have meetings and everything, the members of the school committee are supposed to notify the chairperson if they're not attending. I think we should start doing that, because there's a couple of things that people aren't attending, and we don't know if they're okay or not. So just notify the chairperson when you're not attending any of these meetings, especially school committee. And publicly, I want to thank all those students out there and the teachers. We heard you. We will help you as much as we can, but like Superintendent said, you have to call the people in hierarchy to find some more money to fund education. The formulation is not working for the city of Chelsea and many other cities. And I'd like to have a moment of silence. We lost Carol Bachi, who was a wonderful teacher in the Chelsea Public School. She died two weeks ago.
I just want to collaborate on what Rosemary said. As far as subcommittee meetings and regular meetings, you can either contact me or you can contact Terry, the clerk, if you're not going to show up or if you can't make it. I think it's just fear to all the other members that we do know about this, you know? So I would appreciate it. Is there any, anybody else that would like to, Mr. DePato?
Yes. On behalf of the Chelsea School Committee, I'd like to congratulate Student at Chelsea High School, Stephanie Simone. For those of you who don't know, she became only the second student athlete at Chelsea High School to break a state record. She holds a state record in a long jump. Congratulations to her, and I wish we could send her a resolution in regard to her success.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Julio.
I know with Terry, we were working on a, sort of like a certificate kind of for Stephanie Simon, so hopefully that will be presented soon, and we could talk about it as a, as a full committee, if you guys have any ideas that want to be included for that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak before we adjourn? No? Okay, meetings adjourn.